Little man resting comfortably now?
Yes.
I bet he was wore out.
We were all wore out. We just thought us, we're already wore out.
Can you imagine if that had been one week later? What that had been like? It'd have been a nightmare. I'm good with that. How are you? Evening.
How are you?
Living the dream. And my first inspection yesterday, that was, that was interesting. And it was his first inspection of this place too, so that really made it written. It just smells like a hospital in here. Danny right, it does. Do those get approved to commission court? I don't even know. Jail inspections? Or do we, do I present them? Do I present jail inspections to the court?
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
Just under public comment.
Sure. Classification when they're actually started on today.
Do I need?
The, all the jail staff that's off today, they actually started the classification class today. So that'd be, that'd be done by the end of this week. My wife has flipped out over that. She'd tell you everything there is to know about that, about that, about that man. I asked her, so she, there's two books she could not, she had all the books. And I think whenever she retired from teaching, she might have accidentally left a couple of them, but she couldn't find them. She went on Amazon and looked for them, and it was $3,000.
They're expensive. My wife said she's got two of them.
I told my wife, I said, what makes you think Dr. Stu's legacy didn't do this on purpose, so they can give me money? I said, because you weren't thinking of spending $3,000 on a book, are you? She said, well, no, I never do that. I was like, just checking.
Expensive pens.
You have to bring that up. I use that pen a lot. Oh, don't get me started on that.
All right, it's 10 o'clock. My call is meeting the Russ County Commissioners Court to order. It's Thursday, March the 4th, 2021. It's 10 a.m. I'd like to ask. Kobe, why don't you lead us in prayer, please, in my state, please?
Father in heaven, we come for you. We're just so thankful you've given us another day and that you've given us all this sunshine, God. We're just very, very thankful for that. We're thankful for all these other blessings you bestowed upon us, God. I thank you for the, for everything that happened at the project show. I thank you for lifting up those kids and their projects, God. I just, I'm thankful for your hand in those projects, God. I'm thankful for this court, and may everything they do be pleasing your side. All these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever being just for all. I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
First item on the agenda is to discuss possibly approved budget amendments and our transfers. Motion for Mr. Whitworth to pass, since we don't have any. Second, Mr. Gibson. All those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes. Number two, approve the March 5th, 2021 Russ County payroll.
Multiple approval.
Motion for Mr. Kirk and all, second for Mr. Goff. All those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes. Number three, open and accept bid proposals for the purchase of a one-half ton crew cab, four-wheel drive work truck.
This is from Yates. And I'll let you look at the detail, but it says $37,934. This is from Peters. The bottom number, $31,815.
You want to study those a little bit before you make the decision, Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, I would.
All right. Motion to pass. Or not pass, but. You want to try to do that today or?
Yeah, I can do it today, I just wanted to.
All right, good enough. Move on to number four, discuss possibly approved the depot museum events summary report.
I've never been in here to talk, so where do I go? Right here.
Right there, I work. Y'all got a copy of that in there that Vicki provided.
Well, hello, and I'd like to introduce myself. I don't know you. I'm Vicki Armstrong.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Our attendance, as y'all know, just bottomed out. So attendance for 2020 was 1,517. And compared to 20, excuse me, 19, it was 35,000. So there's a big difference there. And that does include Sartre Festival, the 35,000. Our achievements from the museum, we added gutters, we got a new employee, Daddy Chapman. And in October, the stuff was removed from the rapid grounds of the museum and a precinct brought in dealer to fill in low spots, gopher holes, mole holes, whichever one they are, as they're ankle getters. And in November, Centerport Energy made a donation with the money. They did not want refunded from when they sent us sponsorship money. And they asked us to purchase Discovery Center toys, so that's what we did. The Bell Ross Kitchen also had some boards replaced, and the Bell Ross House needs some work done. And I can't seem to get a contractor to come, but I'm still on it. So sad to say, our scheduled field trips all were canceled. Except maybe a few before the COVID. Our grandparents' day was canceled, our poker day was canceled. And our conference each year, it was canceled, and it was going to be a college station. The Historical Commission had three meetings. And we had the class called yarn works, but she is kind of postponed it right now, not knowing what she wanted to do. So, but hopefully she'll resent the class. Our volunteer hours dropped tremendously. This year, we had, I mean, 2020, we had 2652 compared to 19, it was 6201. And a lot of the 6201 was Historical Commission. But this year, 2020, it was 2652, and I would say all of it was the Historical Commission volunteers that worked in the genealogy and Joan, JR, Jackie, and I just forgot another. One other lady helps in the Historical Commission. And so due to our cancellation of all our events, our volunteer hours are tremendously low. And all the awards that the Historical Commission get, it usually pertains to those hours. So we're sad about that, but we understand. And in the pavilion, the last pavilion, each month we had tractor engine meetings, or they have their tractor, haul engine meetings. And in March before COVID hit, we did have the library come for Farm Day, which Makayla Luna supplied the animals. And under the pavilion during birthday parties, that's where they usually eat cake and open presents. So to right now, the depot will open the Discovery Center, March 8th, which is Monday. And we will be back open in full as normal. And I just request that everyone be smart about it, and if you're sick, stay home, and masks are a personal preference. If that is, that's how we've done it. So, but we'll be back going on March 8th with the Discovery Center. Mr. Rebecca. And that is all. Y'all don't look so sad.
I need a motion to approve it. Motion to approve. Motion for Mr. Goff, second, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you all very much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes. Number five, discuss possibly approved sheriff's office ratio profiling report.
I brought those with me. As you know, y'all know, these are done annually. And there were going to be several changes that are going to take place in the racial profiling report, starting next year. With some additions to the Santa Blanca. Some of the criterias are going to change with the traffic stops as well as the drug arrests. Most importantly, if the officer sees the, the race of the person and knows the race of the person prior to the stop. Which is something we were already doing, but we were only doing it for the traffic stops, not for the arrest, if it's an on-site arrest. So even if we go to someone's house, so that, that part will change, which really won't change our numbers very much. If you'll notice from the report, it's pretty much indicative of our population here in Russ County. And this one was for 2020, obviously, so that was not while I was here. Not that that report will change any. If any, it will get larger. It will be much, there will be much more personal contact in the public, obviously, because we've been making a lot of traffic stops and a lot of arrests. As I kept y'all abreast on, so those numbers will go up. I do not believe, and I will not believe, that the percentages will be a dramatic change at all. I think it would just be a larger amount of contacts.
Any questions for Sheriff Valdez? We were a second, Mr. Kirk. All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, discuss possibly approved sheriff's chapter 59 seizure report.
That one, I believe y'all already have. That was a painstaking report on the part of both Rebecca as well as our SCAD lieutenant, Butch White. He worked very hard on it. There was a lot of pencil to paper, so before we could get it accurate. And I'm happy to report that it is accurate. And Rebecca did a fantastic job. If it wouldn't have been for her, that would have never been able to be done. She's the number guru, and we are not. So and again, those will go up as well. Our seizure reports will, will get bigger based on what we've been doing here lately, and also the recovered stolen vehicles as well. Sometimes they are not ever picked up, and those are vehicles that will be considered abandoned. And at some point, we will have to auction those off as well, which will go also into the seizure count for the next coming year.
Questions for Sheriff Valdez? Motion to approve the seizure report. Motion for Mr. Whitworth, second, Mr. Gibson. All those in favor, all those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Number seven, discuss possibly approved and question Sheriff Valdez to apply for possible change in billing options.
Happy to report it again. Rebecca and I have been working quite a bit, she, she more than I, on finding other payment options when it comes to our training. She's called a lot of the companies and, and made arrangements to have us on the, on billing cycle. So that will no longer be requested by me, so we'll just figure it out.
Move, move pass, move pass. Motion for Mr. Whitworth to pass, second, Mr. Goff. All those in favor, all those opposed? Number eight, reading to the minutes, the county treasurer successfully completed the required 20 hours of continuing education for 2020. I got a piece of paper here that says he completed that education. Don't like to see it. Anybody? Number nine, discuss possibly approved the Russ County Library to donate the amount of $100 from the Ritz-Notz Club. Jennifer, how are you today?
Good morning. I'm good. How are you guys? So I, I have a feeling, this is the first time I've seen this, but I think this is a normal donation that is received for the Russ County Library here in Henderson from the Ritz-Notz Club.
Motion for Mr. Goff, second, Mr. Gibson. All those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes. Number 10, discuss possibly approved and discard Russ County Library system materials to be deemed surplus.
So I'm not 100% sure that this has happened every single year. This, for collection maintenance for libraries, it is recommended that you weed your collection every year. So in the back, I kind of put a little bit of a note about why this list for January, because this is just January and February, why it is so large, and sort of what weeding is. But it is something that we will be doing at the beginning of every year going forward. So probably the first three, four, or five months of the year, I will come in and ask for these items to be deemed surplus. I will also make a note that our report pulls everything that's been discarded, so there are possibly items that have been lost, damaged, for whatever reason, we can't put them back into circulation. So those are on this list as well. They're not things that we've actively chosen to remove from the collection. And then another note I added was that the children's area for Russ County Library itself has not been beeded in at least 10, possibly more than that year. So that is why this list is so large. It's normally not when it's done, when it's supposed to on a regular basis. The list is not quite this large, but that's, that's why it's quite big right now.
Someone checks a book out, then return it, or damages, they're responsible for paying?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They, we attach those charges to their accounts. Once they can pay those charges, then they're free to come back and use the library as much as they would like. But unfortunately, if they cannot pay those, or choose not to pay them, then their privileges for using the library are revoked until the payment is received.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Goff, second, Mr. Whitworth. All those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes. Number 11, public comment, no action to be taken. I got a letter from the audit division, Texas comptroller, that in their audit, all our tax information was upstuffed and we didn't owe any more taxes and everything was good. And access collector did a good job. We got the Russ County Youth Project Show behind us, Mr. Whitworth.
Had it done. Our crew out there did an outstanding job. Lots of compliments on our facilities. Lots of compliments on elected officials and people coming out to support the kids. Appreciate that. Want to remember Billy, out of the airport, still in hospital.
Anybody else? Sheriff, you can tell us about the jail.
About the jail inspection. This was my first one. It was interesting. The judge and I sat in on the findings. We passed. There were some places that needed tending to. One of them was a clerical error, in my opinion, on whether it was a class for classification, which all of our jails have taken, but the new guidelines call for the term objective classification, and apparently that is a different class. And none of us in the jail had taken that class. So we actually started that this morning. The jail staff that's not currently on duty is down in train room right now, and they're going through that classification class. Or, excuse me, the objectionable, objective. Not sure why they put that word in there, but they did. The other one was, we didn't have a fire inspection last year. Well, almost nobody did, because COVID, they weren't coming out. So everything was very, very minor, minor things. We're actually going to send one of our jail staff to a food preparation school or the management school. I don't remember. So we'll have more than one person that's actually certified as that, which is one of the things that he requested. It was a new auditor. He just started right before the new sheriff school, so I actually met him there. So this was his first trip to the Russ County Jail. He was very impressed with the fact that we had had no COVID in our jail, and one of the reasons is because Lieutenant Shaw had a plan set up from start where we had quarantine cells, and they are all, no matter what your classification is, you go to that quarantine cell immediately, and you stay there for that quarantine period before you're classified and put into a pod or left in a single cell. So all in all, it was very, very good. I mean, I knew we weren't going to get dinged very bad. Just because I've been at other jails and I've seen what they look like, and I've seen this one, and there's just no way we could, I would ever imagine we would not pass. So obviously, we did. And we've already touched on all the, the issues and, and started working on them almost immediately. Today being the first day, we started working on the fire inspection. It'll be done tomorrow, so that will put us in compliance with the fire inspection.
Is that the, is the city, city fire marshal do that?
Yes. I remember what the other one was. Well, the other one was the food staff, I think was the other one. So again, it was very, very minor. Nothing that would cause them to go, oh, we need to look at some restructuring or something. Some of the cell checks were one to nine minutes late on a 15-minute check. So we're in the process of, well, the backgrounds are completed, so we'll be hiring two new jail staff probably next week. And that will remedy some of that, because we'll have another boot on the floor that will be able to take up the slack on the checking of the 15-minute checks, 30-minute checks, and the 60-minute checks. But that's it. Yes. Yes. I am extremely happy to air jail.
Anybody else? Anything you want to tell us? No, sir?
I'd like to report that the demo on the central elementary is going good over here. We've got one building already down, probably 80% of the debris gone. Should start the demo, most likely start it today on the second building there. It's going pretty quick right now. Also, Vicki, I don't know if you were notified or not, they found that old newspaper in the wall.
I went up there and also got a doorknob, and JR doesn't want it to, a concrete, I don't know what you call it, but yes, sir. And I got the, I'm gonna get the newspaper. He wanted to show the school. Someone from the school was coming up there, and I just forgot his name, it's probably, maybe, said he wanted to show it to them before I got it.
Yeah.
And so I was supposed to go back up there.
Yeah, I think Craig may have it now.
Okay.
I believe it was, I believe it was in 1927.
27 or 29.
Yeah.
And I looked in where the, where it came from, and it looked like it was used for a purpose, that it wasn't just stuck in there. It was like a lining, because there was more in there. It was weird. Very fun.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Number 12, approve payment of bills. Second, my.
Where it goes to the Association of Counties, the draft, branch plan.
That's our insurance bill for immediate. That is our higher bill. Oh, you wanna know what happened with, there's a debit in it or?
Right.
Okay, so what happened was Angel had entered a duplicate payment. So she took it off of there.
Okay.
So that, that night too, but maybe they've come and taken it off. And see, this one, one is for, um, one more. And then, so one was for January and one was for February, like the first, the 247.
Okay, 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 I understand.
And then, and then there was 242. And then she looks like she entered another one as well and took it off because.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I'll, I'll double check that account to make sure. Democrat.
It's been about what, two?
Four.
Oh, two and a year. Yeah.
Yeah, I got 240, 212.
243.
I'm gonna research, make sure compare from the years.
Okay.
Not 20, now it's been four years.
Right. Motion to approve. Second. Motion from Mr. Goff, pay the bills. Second, Mr. Carton, all those in favor? Uh-huh. All those opposed? Motion passes. Let's go back to number three concerning the one half ton crew cab.
Uh, I'd like to have a little more time to look at these two beds here and I move that we table this until our meeting is coming Monday.
Second. And a second from Mr. Whitworth. All those in favor? Uh, all those opposed? Motion passes. One thing I forgot to mention during public comment, I met with, one of the chamber officers to meet with two gentlemen from Conterra. If you've been watching what's going on up and down East Main and up and down Highway 79, the Conterra is putting in fiber optic, getting, starting the process. I think they've already got it. All the way up to Raider Funeral Home in the past, all the way to the county power business.
Family trust.
Family trust and also some other places. And they wanna look at moving out in the county. So we have fiber optic and our residents have, have that out in the county. And I asked them, where did East Texas Telephone fit in that? And they assured me that East Texas Telephone would be a partner in that and they're gonna come to court probably sometime in April to talk with us about that. As well as I do, that's not something that can be done for nothing, but that was one reason, one, uh, one plus in the, in the basket, when, when they started talking to Gap in Gregg County about bringing Gap and, and the jobs that went with that business, was that they already had the fiber optic out there for the coaxial cable. You know, the future, it would help the sheriff's office, I'm sure, with what they do. And it would help the county as far as the speed and access for our kids. As y'all know, as well as I do, the, the, uh, this COVID deal has been a, in a lot of ways, a real pain. But on the other hand, it is showed us maybe some different ways that business needs to be done. And we can either embrace that or we can stick our heads in the sand like, you know, like I say on that Liberty. Commercial. You know? And I don't wanna stick our heads in the sand. Mr. Carton, they're going, they've also are going to talk to EDCOG and EDCOG's gonna be essential in this and I'm sure they'll tell the y'all, I mean, as far as grants and funding to help with that process. Hands up on that. But anyway. I had somebody tell me one time that that didn't, that didn't, they were all far progress as long as it didn't get north of decent, didn't get south of decent bottom. I don't, I wish, wish to really take that as a, as a way to do business. We're gonna have to step up.
Move decent bottom.
I'm on my journey. Second. Second, Mr. Whitworth, all those in favor? Uh, all those opposed? Thank y'all.